Move, move to adjourn.
Second.
All favor.
All right, everyone. Thank you for being here. The date is Tuesday, May 10th, 2022. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. We are still dealing with the COVID-19, so the board is using WebEx teleconferencing format. So whether you joined us on the web or by teleconference, we thank you. For those interested in giving unscheduled appearances, please use your hand feature online or get our attention if you're on teleconference. And those members of the audience that are here that have filled out speaker cards, they will be taken in the order that they appear that they were received. Each vote today will be verbal or voice vote, so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. And then after we have a motion and a second, then that roll call will be by district. To begin the day, in order to establish quorum, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valli is absent. Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here. Let the record show four members are present, one absent. We have established quorum. We will be able to conduct business today. Now, if I can ask you all to please rise as we invite Pastor Pablo Revier, the first United Methodist Church to deliver the invocation this morning. Good morning. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you. Let us pray. Oh God, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for the, for being a God of love who is with us now in this very room. You never leave us or forsake us. Your grace has brought us safe so far, and your grace will lead us home, Lord. We thank you for making each of us in this room, every person we met, in your image with dignity and definitive worth. We thank you for the calling. You have given every one of us to be the good stewards of your creation, to love our neighbor as ourselves. We thank you this morning, God, for those, your servants here, and we give thanks for the way of service they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us. We all come to this room this morning as complex human beings, carrying burdens, carrying joys and hope, trusting that you alone can hold us together in your love and peace. Help us, Lord, to trust you more, more than our fears and our wounds and even our accomplishments. May we lean on you everlasting arm today. And so we pray for that you will be glorified this morning through the decision of the board supervisors, all the discussions that will happen here today. We pray that we will have the eyes to see how our lives are all connected and how our common good is upheld when we listen and respond to those most vulnerable among us. May your trust be revealed. May your life shine brighter. May your voice of those most silenced be heard loud and clear. We pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage to do what is right and good for Kings County. May we put the interest of others above our own. May we act with love for the common good. We thank you again for this board of supervisors and its members and all, everybody here and all those who work to make this place. We call home such a wonderful county. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. And now join me as we honor America by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of this land, and to the people of this world.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of this board. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. Does the clerk have a record of anyone that would like to address the board at this time?
The first item I have is the board and the staff did receive an email from Jeremy Diaz, and that will become part of the permanent record. The first speaker that I have is Aubrey Stanton.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
I am an IHS worker for the last five to seven years, and I work hard every day to take care of my clients who I live with, and I'm blessed to have. And I feel that Fresno County and Tulare County, they got their 60 cents raise, and I feel that we deserve the same type of raise, right along with health benefits that they receive that we do not receive. I'm not unsure of why we don't get the same raise, but I don't think it's fair that we're not treated the same way. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Yolanda White.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. My name is Yolanda White. I've been working for IHS for 25 years. I'm just trying to, we're here to see if we can get a better pay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Estelle Orozcos.
Good morning. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having us. I've been working for IHSS for 13 years. My, my parents, I take care of them. I, I went with them all day long. It's, it's hard work. It's work. I had quite a good job for it. I would do in a minute. I just feel it's not fair that we don't get 60 cents raise as Fresno and Tulare. It's just, we need this for ourselves, for our livelihoods. And I also don't understand why we don't get insurance. I don't qualify for Medicare, so I have no insurance. And that's, it's devastating to me. I, I need to go to the doctor, and I can't. So I want to know why we can't have, you know, insurance for us, because it's only fair. Everyone else has it, but we don't. So I would like to see if you guys can do something about that. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
The next speaker, I apologize, is Resad Al Baraj. I apologize if I said that wrong. Uh, the next one would be Wendy Newberry.
Good morning. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. I'm also an IHS worker, and we do our everyday job to help our clients. You know, they, they gotta go to the grocery store. We make sure that all their needs are met. We also need our, our needs met as well. We all need healthcare. And that 60 cents will definitely help us with our family, with our family's needs, to do what we need to do, pay our bills, get, put gas in our car, you know, as things that the inflation is rising, our gas is rising. You know, we just need a little help so we can grow and do what we need to do in our lives and to help our families as well. And we need your guys' support so we can do that. I really appreciate your time. You guys have a great day.
Thank you.
And then the next speaker I have is Nicole Fisher.
Good morning. Thanks for being here.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Nicole Fisher, Public Health. I'm here today and grateful to be standing here to recognize International Nurses Week, which is May 6 to 12, with May 12 being the birthday of Florence Nightingale. She was a nurse reformer for making care settings cleaner and safer and therefore reducing preventable infections. I find this especially fitting as nurses are always at the forefront of providing care and information when people are in need so they can make an informed and safe decision for their health. Our recent pandemic is a wonderful example for that. I read a quote recently that nurses are high-impact leaders. High-impact leadership in nursing involves passion, persistence, and kindness. As a nurse myself, I am proud to define my profession with these three words. I want to recognize the nursing and nursing assistant staff that we have in public health, some of whom are here today. I feel honored to be working with them as we serve the needs of our community. I have worked alongside our staff as they have provided passionate and kind care to people in need. Some nurses stand up for their patients and what they feel is right. Your best ally is always a nurse. I would like to have our nursing and assistant nursing staff of public health, some of who came today, stand up, please. I want to thank all of you for all the work that you do, and I hope that you have a wonderful Nurses Week. We could all clap.
Very good. Congratulations. Good luck today and all week and in your profession. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Lupe Villa.
Good morning. Thanks for being here.
What are you guys doing this morning? Lupe Villa with the Elections Office. I just want to give you guys and the audience a brief update on an incident we experienced last week, May 5. We got a call from concerned voter. It's Barbara Martin, District 3, who reported a possible misprint in our informational guide that went out to our registered voters in Kings County. After further review and investigation, it was determined and found that the misprint did exist. I contacted our vendor, our printing vendor, Runbeck Lecture Services out of Arizona, who also confirmed the error existed. So the misprint happened in VIG or ballot type 3. Page 6 was left out. It was replaced by page 8. It covers six races that are all state races. So what we done on that Thursday before we left the office, we uploaded the correct informational guide to our website. We uploaded the link to the correct VIG to our, both our social media platforms, Facebook and Twitter. We made available the informational guide via email upon request of the voter. We also make that informational guide available for any voter that wants to come pick one up at the office as well. I worked with the vendor through Friday. We're able to draft the letter. Those new and revised informational guides will be going out to the public as we speak today. So I'm hoping that they get it by Wednesday or Thursday. And again, it only impacted that one VIG or informational guide. Out of nine, it was, it was one out of nine. The misprint happened at the print shop in Arizona. It was beyond our control, but we did take steps to immediately identify and resolve the issue. So I just want to give you guys an update. I also want to say thank you to Barbara for reporting that issue. And I ask that you or your voters or constituents that do identify any type of error in our material to report that immediately to our office and we'll take the same steps. And I'm here to ask her any questions.
Good. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
And it was only District 3 that got impacted. So I'm sorry, Mr. Verboon.
Hey, my name was on there. I was all good.
It was all state, state, state races on.
Yeah.
No local races. But regardless, they're important races, and people should have the, the ability to do the research and do the, you know, select a contest as, as they wish. So those are the steps that we took.
I will say in the new ballot, there's a lot of confusion because there's a lot of people running for governor, lieutenant governor.
Yeah, we have candidates running for governor, and there's a, a race for Senate in which there's a partial term and a full term that's going to be confusing to our voters as well.
Yeah, you gotta do your homework and take time to read it.
So we took the, the time and, and we proof our material before it hits the mailboxes. And again, the error was found in, in Arizona. So there's, it was beyond our control. It was on them.
You can't trust the people in Arizona.
Well, that's why we're in California. But the, the, we, we do take the time to proof our material as before he goes out, you know, the ballots, the informational guides, any type of election material that goes out, it goes through my desk, and I do the, the final approval of everything that goes out. So I'm here to take the responsibility of my department, and I'm here to speak for it. So.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for your swift and accurate response to that, and certainly appreciate all your efforts between you and your, your office.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, and having a constituent call to find a mistake is important because there's so many people. If you don't know who you're looking for, it, it's hard to tell. So I appreciate the person coming forward.
Yeah. And so do we. So do we. I'm very appreciative of Mr. Martin to, to place that phone call, you know, and it was late Thursday, about 3:30 or so. By 5 o'clock, we had five steps in, in place already for, for the audience or for the voters to request a, you know, a revised informational guide.
I think it's too easy to go on social media and blame somebody than it is to fix the problem.
Yeah. Down here, I'm the man. So I'll take the blame.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. You guys have a good day.
You, too.
The next speaker is Bill Lynch.
Morning, Bill. Thank you. Hey, there's somebody following you.
Yeah. I'm carrying my light. We're here. No, thank you. Bill Lynch, Kings County Fire Department, here this morning to introduce to you our new OEM manager, Abe Valencia. Abe, I know Rosemary's sitting back there. Abe came to us from. But, you know, after a, a long, extensive recruitment and process and interview process, Abe rose to the top, and he does come from public health and is coming very highly recommended by, by many people. And we expect a lot of big things from him. There's a lot, a lot of work to do in OEM, and Abe's gonna rise to the occasion. I hope so.
Thanks, Chief.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm excited to be in this position. I'm usually, doesn't take that long to pick me, but Chief took his time, so I got a little worried. But, you know, I'm glad you made the right decision. I have a little speech for you guys today. No, I really don't. But I'm just excited to be here. OES plays a fundamental role in all counties, and so my job's gonna be to make our county prepare for emergencies, and I'm gonna do the best of my abilities with the help of my team and also all the agencies that, you know, make this great county. So thank you.
Now, I got a, I got a question. So Abe, did you win something at the employee barbecue?
Yeah, I did. So I wasn't here. I was in the training, but the CAO's, CAO's office gracefully held it for me, and I picked it up before the meeting. They said, pick it up after. I said, no, I want to show it off, so.
Wait, no, you have to share it.
No, there's not enough. It's not enough. It's just one Yeti cup, but it's.
We can share.
Well, congratulations and welcome.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Good luck. We already dropped your name at a committee assignment yesterday. So yeah, you're, you're, you know. So don't let the, don't let the fire chief overwork you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good. Welcome aboard. Thanks.
That's all that I'm.
That's all? Do we have anyone online? I see no hands raised. And last call, anybody? Oh, good morning. Thank you for being here. Please state your name for the record and then continue.
Good morning. Monica Connor, Deputy Director for Human Services Agency. There's been a considerable amount of comment today on IHSS, so I wanted to bring just a, a quick update to the board. So our last IHSS negotiation, we are actively in negotiations. I apologize. This isn't my role, but I felt the need to come up and just give a little bit of explanation. IHSS is actively, is actively negotiating with the union. And just as an update, our last meeting with the union was April 21st, at which time the county made an offer. The county received the union's response to its offer on May 5. IHSS is currently in the process of working its counter offer and scheduling the next meeting with the union. It is IHSS impression that the negotiations are going well.
Good. Thank you for the update. Thank you. Is there anyone else under unscheduled? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the reporting out of closed session held on April 26. Mr. Hill, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your board took no reportable actions during the April 26 closed session meeting.
Very good. Thank you very much. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on April 26. Have board members had an opportunity to read those minutes?
Moved.
Okay. Moved by Verboon, seconded by Fagundes. Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valli. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, five members vote yes. The consent calendar, all items under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted at one motion at the request of any board member. Any item may be removed, made part of the regular agenda. There is an extensive list, but there is one correction on one item from admin. And Mr. Hill, would you like to call out that correction?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, there's been a typo on item 4G2 in the fiscal impact section. The value of the third year of the contract on the item, on the agenda item is $627,334, which is incorrect. The correct value is 6,000, or 657,334. That value is correct in the contract. It's just incorrect on the board item.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Thank you for that update and correction.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Second. Moved by Verboon, seconded by Fagundes. Additional questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valli.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. But the record show the consent calendar stands approved unanimously. Thank you very much. First item under regular agenda items comes from Behavioral Health with a couple of items. First one is to consider the agreement with Destinations Recovery, New Recovery. An Chung, you have the item?
Yes.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the board. An Chung Carey with Behavioral Health. This morning, the department is seeking approval of the agreement with Destination to Recovery LLC, Destination. In early January this year, Kings County Behavioral Health became a responsible agency to provide specialty mental health services and the placement under short-term residential therapeutic placement program. The goal of program is to transition consumer into a safe environment following the, their treatment and provide a short-term stay at the facility. On January 25, Kings County Behavioral Health authorized Destination to provide the STRTP, which is considered as an urgent need of services. Destination disagreed to provide those services and the placement for the consumer with the guarantee of a payment from the, from department. And this guarantee letter was worked closely with the legal counsel to allow that placement. The location of the facility is in El Cajon, California, which is in Southern California, and they also have four other facility within that Southern California location. The contract agreement process took some extended time due to the having difficult time agreeing on the terms within the county and a destination. And also, they also had a little difficult time providing all necessary contract agreement requirement from the county. The term is from January 31, 2022 through January 31, 2023, and the department is seeking agreement with all other four, total five facility, including the one in El Cajon to, for any future need for the services. The agreement has been reviewed and approved by the county council, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, An Chung. Questions or comments regarding the item?
No questions, no comments. I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second, and then Supervisor Valley. So the question I would have would be, it's retroactive, so is there the reason because of the blacking on their end, they, they couldn't come together?
Yes, we, it, we had some difficult time having them with some of our county terms in the agreement and also the other pieces that require to enter into agreement, such as.
The work got done. The work got done. It just wasn't signed, correct?
I'm sorry?
The work was being done.
Yes, yes. And that, that is why we worked with the county council to providing the guarantee payment letter, which was agree up on both.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to approve a contract that they weren't doing anything for five months.
Right. Good. Thank you. Supervisor Peterson, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, just one question. The placements, are these voluntary placements or are they, they're directed placements?
Um, yeah. These are placements of children in secure treatment facilities, so they can be in California in other counties typically, and they're typically done very quickly. And so that's one of the reasons that it takes a while for the, the contract to be done. We need to place the child, and then we need to get the contract completed. They can be placed in any number of facilities.
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, we take the responsibility, I guess, when we ship someone out of county, and I'm just curious if it was voluntary, if they're being held voluntary. It's not something that they can walk away from and.
No, they cannot. Right. So they're children, so they're under the auspices either of their parents or of another guardian. So, and that's who makes the decisions about where they're placed.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? The motion was made by Supervisor Fagundes, seconded by Supervisor Valli. And if there is no other questions or comments, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valli.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, five in favor. Thank you very much. The second item coming from Behavioral Health is to consider adopting a resolution for May of 2022. Dr. Lewis, thank you for joining us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Lisa Lewis, Behavioral Health. Kings County Behavioral Health, in collaboration with Kings County Mental Health Task Force, is requesting the county help raise awareness for mental health issues and services by promoting May 2022 as Mental Health Matters Month in Kings County. I'm coming before you this morning to request that your board adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of May 2022 as Mental Health Matters Month in Kings County. As a bit of background, in 2013, the state of California proclaimed May as Mental Health Matters Month. The statewide effort was created to generate a greater understanding of mental health issues through the Each Mind Matters campaign. The goal is to increase awareness, but also to reduce barriers and stigma associated with individuals seeking mental health treatment to live longer and healthier lives. Throughout Mental Health Matters Month, Kings County Behavioral Health, in collaboration with Kings Partnership and working with Kings County Mental Health Task Force, will be engaging the community in various ways. Some of the planned events include radio ads promoting services for the month, and the campaign will be aired on iHeart Radio Media, iHeart Media, excuse me, Spanish and English on La Preciosa, 92.9, B95, and Power Talk 96.7. We've changed our billboard on Lacy and 11 to promote mental wellness. We will have a booth at the Thursday night market events on Main Street doing outreach and, and providing resources. We'll be promoting Kings County's support groups, including Sister Speak, our veterans' support group, and our family support group. At the Source LGBTQ Support Group will be focusing on presentations at health and wellness outreach events. Oak Wellness Center Wellness Fair and Community Walk is happening right now, today. The Reef Sunset Mental Health Awareness Outreach and Resources will be happening, and Kings Partnership will be promoting mental health awareness tips and resources via social media and websites. Additionally, we have Hanford Elementary School District presenting mental health awareness in various platforms across K8. Faith Base includes Life of Victory Outreach, Mental Health, Mental Health Wellness Event in Lemoore. And first, this year, and something we hope to repeat in the future, Kings County Behavioral Health will be hosting a billboard, which is announcing a children's drawing contest promoting a new children's. promoting a new children's mental health services, Our Kind Center. And throughout the county, children will be encouraged to submit artwork depicting what mental health means to me. And we'll be choosing winners and using their art with their parents' approval on our billboards and some of our promotional material. We hope to do this more in the future. There is no impact of the general fund, and as requested, your board, we are requesting your board to adopt the resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Questions, comments? Supervisor Verboon.
I see you have Hanford Elementary School District on here, Reef Sunset. Did you reach out to Kings County Public Schools or any of the country schools?
Yeah.
So they're part of that too?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the specifics of the schools, but yeah.
Yes.
I know we reached out to.
Yeah, we have touched upon some of the schools, each school that were able to, as I mentioned, but we also have a lot of community outreach at the outside of the school that they are able to assist.
Okay, thank you. We'll make sure no one like Joey gets dropped to the cracks.
Again.
Again.
Again. So move.
Second.
Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Verboon. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon. Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, the item stands approved unanimously, and good luck, thank you very much, and good luck at the walk. The next item on this morning's agenda comes from Human Services Agency and considering recognizing May 2022 as Foster Care Month. Monica, good morning, thank you again.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Monica Connor, Deputy Director for Human Services Agency, the Child Welfare Division. May is National Foster Care Awareness Month, a time dedicated to raising awareness for all children and youth in foster care. It is also a time to honor foster parents for the amazing work they do to support youth and foster, and foster children. I want to share some quick data that puts into perspective some of the great commitment from foster parents and social workers to serve children in home-based settings. It'll be quick data, okay? In 2016, Kings had approximately 574 children in out-of-home care. We currently have 307. In 2016, 49% of children were placed in county foster homes and in relative homes. That number today has increased to 63%. In 2016, 33% of children were placed in foster family agency homes, and today that number is 10%. And this is a significant stat here that I want to highlight. In 2016, Kings County had 18 children in group home placements. As of today, we only have two. The use of county foster homes and relative placements not only contributes to the well-being of children, it also allows counties to experience savings, savings in foster care placement costs. So at this time, I'm going to hand it off to Trish Schubert to introduce some of the amazing foster parents we have before the board today.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Trish Schubert, Child Welfare, Kings County Human Services Agency. We have five foster parents that are with us today that are doing the amazing work that Monica just so eloquently mapped out for us. I want to take this time to first honor Bobby Williams, who has been our audience today. Bobby and her husband Clinton have been opening up their home since 1997. So this is about 25 years providing services to our foster youth. Not only is Bobby and her husband Clinton opening up their home, but they love to provide the first-time experiences to our foster youth, which they wouldn't normally have the opportunity to experience.
It's okay, he hasn't bit anybody all day.
Our next foster parent that we would like to honor is Sheila Long. Sheila Long has been a Kings County foster home for approximately 12 years, and I believe Sheila is also in our audience today. Sheila takes on the care and support for some of our most critically special services infants. And I believe that she is, Sheila, if you don't mind coming down so we can take a picture with you. Zamora Wilson from the Corcoran area, I believe, is also in our audience today. Zamora is a newly approved resource parent for Kings County, and she is taking on the support for some of our teenagers, at which it's sometimes very difficult for us to find homes for our teenage youth who experience complex needs. And Zamora is taking on that challenge. Thank you so much, Zamora, for being here. Maria Seles and Diana Miranda from the Avonel Corcoran area, I believe, is also in our audience today. Maria and Diana have been foster parents for approximately three years, and they have been dedicated to providing foster homes for sibling groups and currently have a sibling group of three between the ages of 10 and 16 in their home. And I believe our last foster parent in the audience today is Rachel Baca, who has been a foster parent for a foster family agency home caring for kids. She's been a care provider for approximately 10 months and has one of our most complex case youth in her care right now, and has been dedicating her time and support serving this youth, and we appreciate her so well and... so much, and we have a complete team wrapped around Mrs. Baca helping support that placement, and we do want to thank you so dearly. We know the dedication you are putting in every single day, including this morning. So, thank you. So these are our five foster parents that we would like to be honoring today, and I was hoping we can get a quick photo opportunity with one of the members of the board.
Oh, no, we just, everybody, we'll just catch you right here.
Thank you so much.
All right, you got everybody? One more? Can you get the glare off a little bit? Okay, thanks. Yeah. All right, good job, everyone.
Mr. Chair, if I could say something?
Thank you so much, and I'll just close with asking the board to graciously honor May as adopting the rec, and recognizing the resolution for Foster Care Month for 2022. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Verboon, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution to organize, for the organization of May 2022 for Foster Care Month in Kings County. But I'd like to add a couple of comments. You know, 25 years ago, I had to become a foster parent for a temporary time, about six weeks, and it takes a special person to open up their home for a complete stranger. And you have to childproof your house, you bring in new personalities, new actions. It takes a lot of patience, it takes a lot of courage, and there's a place in the world for these people, and I like to recognize them today. I think that our staff has done a great job, but it's important. I mean, there's a lot of people brought into the world today, the young infant, I don't know what that story is, but a lot of drug addiction, a lot of abuse in families, and I think it's a, we need people like this, we need more of them. So thank you again for what you guys do.
Absolutely. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Valley. Additional questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, that item stands approved, five in favor, thank you very much. All right, the next item comes from Information Technology Cloud Backup Solution and Backup Storage for Purchase. And Dave, you got the duty.
That's a tough act to follow, good job, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Dave Schuber from the IT Department. We're requesting your approval today for two technology items to help support our Office 365. When we implemented it about a year ago, a lot of unknowns were, we didn't know about, and one of them is, there's a lot of data going to be in the cloud now. OneDrive, email, Teams, and SharePoint, so we need a technology to help back that up, and we want to back it up in the cloud. So we got two products. Veeam is our backup solution we use now internally. We're requesting your approval to purchase the cloud version of it that will back it up to a cloud provider. That way, we're not also creating unneeded traffic into the county. We can just send it straight to the cloud and keep everything backed up. As we move forward, we see a lot of users using the OneDrive. The OneDrive is equivalent to your W Drive today, and from there, you can share things out as needed. So, you know, it's definitely a technology we'll need to move forward. If you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Dave. I see you have backup behind you too, so yeah, yeah.
That's our Veeam expert.
Good, always a good.
We can, we can download our TikTok and our Facebook.
Yeah, we'll back it up.
We'll have a record of it.
Instagram.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm covered, all right.
Yeah, we'll be watching them.
With that, I'll make a motion to honor.
Supervisor Fagundes moved, Verboon seconded, thank you very much. Additional questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, that item stands approved, five in favor, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Good luck with the backup, and I'm glad, I'm glad you brought some help with you this morning.
Yeah, it's my security.
Yeah, yeah. All right, the next item comes from Department of Public Health regarding solid waste enforcement. And Rosemary.
Good morning, thank you, Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Rosemary Rand, Public Health. We're here this morning with an item from our Environmental Health Services Division. Environmental Health is the designated local enforcement agency for solid waste facilities in Kings County, and we've had this designation since 1992. The California Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery, CalRecycle, is accepting applications from counties for the local enforcement agency grant program. Kings County is eligible for a grant of approximately $19,715 for the 2223 fiscal year, and we've been receiving similar grants since 1992. The grant, if awarded, would increase the county revenue by the estimated amount and has already been budgeted in since we've been taking this grant every year. Funds would be used for the existing personnel costs, equipment, and training costs. We're recommending that your board adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Health to sign the local enforcement agency grant application to CalRecycle and subsequently execute all necessary agreements to secure these funds for Kings County. And we're here to answer any questions.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
And you got backup too with Troy, huh? Yeah, so man, everybody's bringing, bringing in backup, I don't know. So move.
Second.
Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Verboon. Additional questions or comments? Enforcement issues? Anybody you want to narc on? No, 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 no. Seeing no one come forward, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, that item stands approved, five in favor, good luck.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks, Troy. Fine presentation. The next item comes from Public Works, a discussion on Historic Building Restoration Grant Program. And you brought backup, man, I'll tell you, everybody's, I guess.
So, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tim Bershers, Kings County Parks and Ground Superintendent. I'm before your board today to discuss a proposed historic building restoration grant program, ultimately with the recommendation for your board to approve a letter of support in the Kings County Board of Supervisors for the proposed California Historic Building Restoration Grant Program. Since this is the brainchild of Mr. Jack Schwartz, President of the Carnegie Museum Board, I'm happy to introduce Jack to help explain the program in greater detail.
Thank you, Tim. Good morning, Jack, thanks for being here.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, Jack Schwartz. I'm the President of the Carnegie Museum of Kings County. We took over the operation of the museum last July, and while we were working with that with the city, the city provided a, and commissioned a seismic evaluation of the 1905 Carnegie Library Building. And it was determined that there were significant amounts of seismic retrofit work that needed to be accomplished, and approximately 650,000 back then, I'm sure it's more now because of inflation. I then undertook, both myself and with a couple lobbyists in Sacramento, to look for grant money available for seismic retrofit of historic buildings, and I found there was none. There was little money available even at the national level. I then looked and realized that this building from 1905 also needs ADA accessibility. At that time, we had a mayor in Hanford who was in a wheelchair who could not even get into the building. I then looked to see whether there was grant money for ADA accessible construction in the state of California, and the answer was no, not really. There, anything that's out there would be basically trying to put a square peg in a round hole. So I devised, with the help of Senator Hurtado, who is championing this program on our behalf, a historic building restoration grant program. It is a very targeted program, which would have three eligible activities for applicants. One, seismic retrofit construction. Two, ADA accessibility construction. And three, substantial rehabilitation restoration. The eligible grant buildings are, one, buildings throughout the state that are on the National Register of Historic Places. Two, they're either state or local landmark. Or three, they're over 100 years old and they are accessible to the public. In other words, they're being operated for the public benefit. Eligible grantees would be nonprofit corporations and cities and counties or local jurisdictions. If a local jurisdiction provides an application, there would be a 25% match from the local government. There would be no match requirement for nonprofits. We have put together this program with the seven, asking the state to include in the state budget, a $75 million grant program. Each application would be limited to $750,000. In this way, we could help a minimum of 100 historic buildings throughout the state that require this type of work. And the response I am getting from throughout the state has been great. To Wallerme County, for example, just took over their historic, 1899, I believe it is, courthouse that needs substantial work. Here in Hanford is an example, the Carnegie Library Building. Obviously, I thought of that when I was thinking about this program. The Taoist Temple, which had a fire back in May of 2021. There's insurance money there, but it won't cover the cost of restoring that building. There are other buildings in, in, in the county. An example would, might be the old church that is run by the Historical Society out in Grangeville at 14th and Hackett. Anyhow, the need is great. I've been approached by groups, small nonprofits and historic groups out of Los Angeles and San Diego. I understand that there are several counties and groups up in the wine country that are looking at this. And so what we're asking you to do today is to provide a letter to the Senate Budget Committee, Senator Skinner and Calm Lager, and to support this type of program. It's efforts that, you know, we're getting work through the state, throughout groups throughout the state, counties throughout the state, cities throughout the state, and it's time that we spend some money on our historic buildings so that they'll be here 100 years from now, just like we can enjoy them now. Thank you very much. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Good, thank you, Jack. Question, Supervisor Peterson?
Yeah, I do. Thank you for this, but I do have one question. In the, in the definition here, it's if a local government applies, you have to supply a 25% match, and a nonprofit, nonprofit would need to supply no match. So how do you, why is that different?
Generally, the nonprofits don't have any money, and the cities and counties have a limited amount of money, and it's basically to spread the wealth a little bit more, because to the extent that we can get some local government money involved at a 25% match, it allows for a greater variety of projects to be eligible.
I guess it may also limit.
It could, it could.
I just think maybe if it were just the 750, it would be a little more palatable, but that's your, your choice.
Additional questions or comments?
Yeah, it's fair. So basically, you're asking us to support a bill, right?
This is... No, this is a standalone budget ask. It's being done through the budget process, not through a regular standalone bill. And we've approached, you know... And we've approached, you know, Senator Hurtado is championing it. And I've also got people requesting that the governor included in his May 15 budget revision proposal, since the state has $68 billion available that they didn't expect to have. So, we really hope that, there should be a no brainer. But you never know, the more support, the better.
I'd like to make a motion to support. I think Jack has done a great job with the Carnegie. Anybody knows the history, we've gone through some ups and downs over the years. Building 1905, my house is 1906, been remodeled twice just to keep it so it stands up. I know this, this has not been remodeled ever, I don't believe. We need to do something to it so we can protect it. Anything we can do would be appreciated. But Jack, on the other hand, has done remarkable job bringing it back to life. I know we need to probably do some more work in the future. I think there's some stuff missing from the Carnegie that had been put in hiding from the previous manager. I know my family has some sheriff's potty saddle and a toaster, some stuff in there and some pictures of my house dating back to 1906 or 1908. So, anything we can do to help you in the future, we, I would appreciate, you know, appreciate you coming telling us, you know, how we can help you. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
So, you want to put this on Chris Combs' plate, too, to have him?
Yep. I see, contact our lobbyists, too, to help push it through.
That would be great. Okay.
I wouldn't mind doing federal, too. I mean, it might be the federal money for Carnegie out there, so.
There, the National Trust runs some, but it's very limited. And when you get into other grant programs, including at the state, there are a lot of other activities such as operational work and soft costs and, and things that, and then you have to be targeted in various things. This is a, I designed this to be a very targeted, limited program to try and get it in without a lot of complications.
Okay.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none. The items have been moved by Verboon, seconded by Fagundes. Is there, if there is no other comment, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Let the record show that item stands approved. Five in favor. Good luck, Jack.
Thank you.
Good job, Tim. Good presentation.
Jack, you got an event coming up?
Yes.
Time to plug it.
Okay. Two things. Our new exhibition, as you well know, we do themed exhibitions. And our next exhibition will start June 3rd. And it is a salute to Kings County athletes. We're working with all of the local high schools, as well as reaching out to probably 30 athletes who have excelled both in high school, at college level, as Olympians and pro athletes. The other thing is that on June 4th, we will have another car show in downtown Hanford. It will be part of the, which I hope will become an annual event, a kickoff the summer festival. We'll also have, besides the car show, an antique fair, food, pancake breakfast, music and food trucks. So, I'm hoping that becomes an annual event for downtown Hanford. And thank you, Supervisor Verboon, for entering a vehicle.
It was rigged last time.
It was? Because you come in second?
No, he actually won.
So you, did you reach out to Damian Douglas to be part of that?
Yes.
Should reach out to his son, too. His son is a star at his university basketball team, team, continuing to build up a name for Hanford.
Yeah.
Through that sport. All right, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Good luck. The second item coming from Public Works is to consider adopting a resolution proclaiming May 15th through the 21st as National Public Works Week.
It coincides with Mental Health Week, too.
Well, they get the whole month. We just.
They only need a week.
My question is, why aren't you working?
Oh. White shirt on, that's what happens.
I know, I know. Just don't throw tomatoes at me.
Yeah.
Dominic Tiberzki, Public Works Department. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm before you this morning to request approval of a resolution proclaiming May 15th through the 21st of this year as National Public Works Week here in Kings County. The American Public Works Association has taken the opportunity to celebrate the hardworking men and women in the field of public works for over six decades in the month of May. As with many other professions, disciplines and vocations here at the county, everyone deserves their moment to shine in the spotlight. And next week is that of the public works professionals. Public Works, representing all levels of government service, is responsible for the design, construction, maintenance, and operation of buildings, transportation facilities, sewer, water, county parks and grounds, equipment, janitorial services and fleet, all of which are vital and essential to serve the public. At this time, I respectfully request approval of the resolution before your board in order to memorialize this well-deserved acknowledgement.
Thank you, Dominic.
There are no questions or comments. I'd like to make a move.
Very good. Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Peterson. Additional questions or comments?
Just very quickly, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I know I told Dominic this, but out in the countryside, our road crew's been hard at it. We're, we're getting on the berms along the roads and making it much safer and doing a beautiful job, I might add. Noticed it in my area and, and I've seen him working all over the county. So, please pass on my appreciation.
Actually, I got a compliment from a gentleman that works here in the community doing work all over the place. And he says, all I do is get complaints all the time. And he wanted to thank me for the job that Public Works does on the roads. He was in Tulare County and says, holy cow, they got a lot of work to do. So, they noticed the difference between Tulare County and Kings County. So, thank you, Dominic. Appreciate it. I read the county the same thing, too. They got issues to work on.
Yeah, I want to, let's chat. I want to say thank you, too. And then, I mean, not only just at the county level, but the city levels of Public Works crew. You know, you guys make everyone look good, make the city councils look good when you got the city looking good, the grass green, the lawns mowed. And I know everybody else gets, probably gets a credit for a lot of the sweat from the men and women on the Public Works departments. But also you guys did turn around a lot, Nimagin Corcoran. I haven't got one complaint since you guys went down there about a month and a half ago. This Corcoran Cemetery even invested money in the appearance. They spent money, laid down a lot of bark on the outside of the cemeteries when people drive by. And they're putting bark inside different areas and covering dirt. So, you guys, you guys really motivated that crew there, too. So, look, get on. I was out there Friday for a funeral and then out there yesterday. I know a lot of people were out there on Mother's Day and not one complaint coming out of there. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Glad to help.
Yeah, I'd like to thank them also for, also our barbecue last week for employee recognition. And they bent over backwards here. Early in the morning, they're here and putting things away. And without them, it'd be hard for us to do all that. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Got a great crew.
Lot of dedicated, great people.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. That item has been moved by Fagundes, seconded by Peterson. If there is no other questions or comments, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show that item stands approved. Five in favor. Good luck. Thank you. That concludes all of the action items of the morning. We'll now move to a study session with a discussion on the 1383 issues. So, Mr. Hill, would you like to lead off the discussion?
Yeah, let's get trashy.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to turn this part of the study session over to Mr. Boyet from our admin office to provide the presentation and the details.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Boyet, administrative analyst, Kings County Administration. So, before your board this morning is a study session to go over why we're all here, what Senate Bill 1383 is all about, what responsibilities we have, and the two ways in which the county can choose to implement all of the responsibilities. And then I'll go over both the county impacts, us as an agency, as well as the generator impacts of both models. And then at the end of that, you know, open up for discussion and then eventually seek direction from your board as to which one of the models to go ahead and implement 1383 with. So, with that, why are we all here? So, SB 1383, their overall goal is to basically reduce all of the organic waste that was generated at levels in 2014. They want to reduce all of that by 50% by 2020. Excuse me, I do believe that as a typo. I do believe it is 2022, if I'm not mistaken. And then again, reduce it by 75% three years later in 2025. And so, how are they going to reach those goals? Essentially, it's a four-pronged approach, one of which is organic waste hauling, where trash will be separated with your organic waste, your recycling material and your regular, I guess, soiled trash, for lack of a better description, and then hauled off to the appropriate facilities, as well as those in the commercial space, edible food recovery. So, certain commercial facilities that have unused food that still meet all of the, you know, health and safety requirements that are able to still be used, that will have to be separated and then sent off to edible food recovery organizations that will, you know, repurpose that into the community for those in need. And then the food that is, that does not meet those various standards will then be sent out for proper disposal. Next prong is procurement, where all of the jurisdictions within the state, they have procurement guidelines where they must procure specific amounts of landfill diverted organic waste. So, that's things like renewable energy, paper products and stuff like that. So, you have to, jurisdictions have certain targets that the state, CalRecycle, has issued to say you have to procure a certain amount of tonnage every year in these landfill diverted organic waste products. And then lastly, it's just all of the jurisdictions have to have a capacity plan as to the capacity to reach all of these goals and aspirations, to get to the goals that the state outlined for all of the jurisdictions. And if there are any deficiencies within that capacity, all the jurisdictions are to address those, create plans to say, hey, these are our deficiencies, yet this is how we're going to close that gap and still meet all of the requirements of 1383. So, that's what 1383 is all about and the state's overall goal. And so, who's going to be responsible to implement 1383? And it's going to be us as a county jurisdiction. It's going to be all of the cities, the incorporated cities, as well as the community services districts. So, each one is responsible for their own boundaries. So, we're not going to be responsible for anything within the city limits of Hanford, within the city limits of Lemoore, Corcoran, nor are we going to be responsible for anything within the service areas of like the Armona Community Service District, Stratford, Armona and Kettleman City, stuff like that. So, they're all going to be responsible for their own piece of the pie. We're responsible for the areas that we do not share with any of those jurisdictions. And with that, all of the jurisdictions that I just laid out are going to be responsible for all aspects of 1383, unless they get census tracking exemptions for various parcels in their jurisdiction. So, everybody has to do the education, the outreach, the enforcement. They have to do, you know, waste characterizations, capacity planning and all of that stuff. So, and if, you know, any jurisdiction is noncompliant and hasn't gone through the exemption process with CalRecycle, or as I was before your board previously with the Senate Bill 619, the notice of intent to comply, if, if, if a jurisdiction basically hasn't done anything, there are severe fines in place to the tune of about $10,000 a day, which is about $310,000 a month. So, it can get expensive pretty quickly if jurisdictions don't decide to act one way or the other. So, with that, there are two ways in which jurisdictions can go ahead and implement 1383. The first one is a free market system where all generators and I'll just want to clarify something. Generators doesn't mean every single person. A generator is just a specific household. So, whether there's one person living in that house or a thousand people living in that house, it's, you know, one, one generator per, you know, Dominic, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, basically one address, one generator, basically. So, so I don't want to get that mistaken with our population size and things like that. So, basically in the free market, it's as easy as it sounds. You know, every generator can choose whichever method that they wish. If they want to separate their own waste at home and haul it to Kings Waste and Recycling Authority, KWRA, they can do so. If they don't want to do that, they can procure service from one of the licensed haulers that obtained a license through our Public Works Department. They can procure service through that hauler to actually, you know, have all of that stuff taken care of for them through the hauling service. So, that's the free market system. The other system or model of implementation is the franchise zone model. And so, that would entail basically our jurisdictional portions, again, outside of the city jurisdictions and outside of the community services district boundaries. Our jurisdictional portions will be divided up into various zones. And with, within those zones, there will be specific haulers that will be assigned to those zones. And depending on where you live within that zone, you'll be required to procure service from that particular vendor assigned to that particular zone. But with that, although in the franchise zone model, generators are required to procure services, they will still have the option to self-haul excess garbage to KWRA. So, if they're, you know, remodeling their house or they're, you know, re-landscaping their own yard and they've got all of this excess stuff that is kind of outside the maybe normal schedule or capacity of their normal services, they, they will have the ability to go ahead and self-haul that over to KWRA. But for their standard normal services, they will be required to procure service. So, I want to go over the impacts, both the county, us as a, as a jurisdictional agency, as well as the generator impacts of both of these models. So, in the free market model, the, the county impact is we're going to need some staff support. And so, initially, as we roll this out, the thought is we're going to need about two full-time positions with the estimated cost to be about $105,000 per FTE. And that includes both salary and benefits. So, what those folks are going to be doing, and I'll back up just a little bit. You'll notice that it says county department to be determined. So, depending on which model we choose and all of that, you know, we're, we're still finalizing where these folks are going to live. What department makes the most sense for them, depending on ultimately what model we choose and ultimately what responsibilities they will be doing. So, at this point in time, that has not been finalized yet. So, you'll, you'll see that on another slide here as well. So, those FTE will be responsible for doing the monitoring of the software system over at KWRA for those that choose to self-haul. So, those that choose to self-haul will have to have a login or an account of the recyclist software at KWRA that will track and report out on all of their activities. And so, one of the duties that will be done in-house will be to actually monitor that system, ensure all of this self-hauling stuff is taken care of and everything reported to the state in regards to all of the self-hauling activities are taken care of as well. Along with, at least in the initial stages of this, as this is going to be new to everybody, a lot of interaction and maybe guidance with the haulers, the, excuse me, the, those that choose to self-haul. Because, you know, they might have a lot of questions or there might be some confusion or complications. So, a little extra handholding, if you will, for, for lack of a better term. And so, on top of that, also doing all of the enforcement and compliance stuff in-house. And so, there, there are some initial thoughts as to, there are two FTE in the infancy stages as, as we kind of roll this out and as it is so new. But as it gets to be a little more of a well-oiled machine, there are a, there is potential for that to be decreased to one FTE, depending on how smooth everything goes. So, but it is, at least in the initial stages of this, having two will, will be beneficial to ensure that this gets implemented and rolled out correctly. With the staff comes, you know, additional costs as well in regards to office space, build-out and required equipment, you know, IT equipment, computers, phones and things of that nature. So, those initial cost estimates are. So um those initial cost estimates are about a hundred thousand dollars for the build-out of the office space, um and then another ten thousand for the supplies and IT. And a quick note on that build-out, um that's strictly a one-time cost. So obviously, once we build out that office space, we're not going to need to build it out again, right? So. It's 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 to be determined, yeah. So de- depending on which department um that these FTE will live in, it'll be, you know, assessed at that time and um, you know, we'll we'll come back and uh um make that decision. So uh with that, year one total costs of the free market system for the county, it's going to be about three uh three hundred and twenty thousand in the first year. Obviously, that's a little bit inflated due to the potential build-out cost of the offices. So year two and ongoing, you're looking at more of about a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar um cost per year. And so the reason why, and you'll see here in a second, the reason why these are uh these costs are going to be a little higher than the franchise zone model is due to, you know, the county having a little more of a um responsibility in action, strictly due to the self-hauling function and um, you know, monitoring and uh reporting on those activities and um uh having more uh potential for um, you know, route review and compliance and enforcement and things of that nature, so.
And so I'm sure so these costs are direct uh result of action that the state is mandating us to do, but not sending us money to cover the mandate.
Correct. And with that, that I'm glad you brought that point up, you know, that the state is sending us no money for this. And so there, again, this is still in the developmental stages, but um there the the initial thought process is that there is going to be a cost recovery to this. And so um whether that comes, you know, from, you know, self-hauling or uh, you know, hauler fees and things like that, um that that model is still uh being refined at this point. But just to kind of give you a general idea of what the potential costs would be, and I'll I'll actually get those in um, get those uh on the next slide. You'll see where I've kind of outlined what those uh potential cost recovery measures will be simply because the state, you know, didn't send us any money to implement this. So with that, what are the generator impacts of the free market model? So um obviously, their their main impact is they get free choice, right? They they can either uh self-haul and separate their organic waste and take it to KWRA and um go that route, or they can procure services on their own from whoever they wish, so long as they have the proper licensing issued by our Public Works Department. But with that, there also comes um a little bit of uh, there's little to no control over the rates of the haulers. So those that do wish to procure services from a licensed taller, uh they're going to basically be at the mercy of those haulers for whatever rates that the haulers set, uh based on whatever investments the haulers uh have in the area and whatever, you know, cost recovery that the haulers have and whatever their fee structures are. We're we're not going to have any control over that um in the free market system. So uh there are, you know, uh potential situations where they 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 could see higher fees and specifically times like this, as, you know, um goods and services are increasing all over the place, inflation on the rise, uh particularly the cost of fuel through the roof. They could potentially see um issues where uh service fees can potentially increase there. So um but with that, obviously, those that uh elect to self-haul, they're not, they're going to be immune to these cost increases uh or or potential rate increases because they're going to be self-hauling, they're not going to, you know, be paying haulers to haul their trash. So um with that, they also get flexibility, right? As I mentioned, they can either do one or the other based on what works best for them, uh what works best for their, you know, own um situations. And so that's um that's great for them. So uh but with that, obviously, with more flexibility, there's going to be a little more responsibility on their part. So if they do elect to self-haul, um they have to, you know, ensure that they're separating their trash appropriately, that they're hauling it to the appropriate uh facility at KWRA. They're um, you know, providing um all of the uh metrics and everything for reporting. So there 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 is a little bit more of an onus there on those that do elect to self-haul. So and then with that, at the end, they can obviously uh suspend service if they're on an extended leave uh for vacation for any, you know, particular length of time. And so um with that, there's also uh continuing on here with the generator impacts. Those that do elect to self-haul to KWRA, um as Supervisor Valley alluded to, the, you know, the state isn't sending us any money for this. So there is going to be some sort of cost recovery model built in to both of these models. Again, to be determined at this point as we're uh kind of working through which, you know, implement uh mo- implementation model to choose. But um to give just a general idea, um, you know, there's two hun- excuse me, two thousand five hundred and ninety-four generators that we're going to be responsible for in our jurisdictional areas. And so if we simply divide that by our year one cost of three hundred and twenty thousand, you're potentially looking at a hundred and twenty-three, a hundred and twenty-four dollar per year um fee, whether that's a permit fee, a license fee, an admin fee, or whatever, per generator in the first year. Obviously, as that build-out cost goes away in the second year, then the um, you know, yearly fee will decrease down to the eighty-four dollar, um eighty-four dollars and eighty-two cents there. So and again, um depending on the model that we choose, you know, this this is just a a base, just to kind of get you in the ballpark of what um, you know, generators could potentially see. There are initial discussions that uh those that elect to self-haul will potentially see a higher portion of that cost share because they're going to be um requiring a higher amount of resources and a higher demand on the resources at the county level to ensure um that those activities are being done appropriately and um, you know, all of the uh things that the county is having to do in order for those that elect to self-haul. So um again, we don't know what that cost share is going to be, you know, is it going to be, you know, a certain percentage, whether that's, you know, seventy percent on those that self-haul and then those that elect to do uh, you know, uh hauling services, they, you know, just have a small administrative fee of the other thirty percent or whatever. Again, none of that has been finalized. As we, you know, hopefully get direction from your board this morning as to what model we choose, we can then um refine those a little bit. But um but it it will not be uncommon to see those that elect to self-haul share a larger piece of the cost recovery than those that elect to um go the um hauler route and actually procure services. So um with that, lastly, on the generator impacts, their ultimate responsibilities, if they elect to self-haul, they do have the responsibility to actually, you know, separate all their waste um and then haul it to appropriate um, the appropriate facility, which in our area is KWRA. Along with that is the uh proper uh reporting uh within KWRA's uh recyclist software system for all of the self-hauling activities. So next, uh we'll move into the impacts of the franchise zone model. So we're going to go into the county impacts first and then generator impacts second. So you'll see here, again, county department to be determined. And you'll notice here that we only have one staff um needed at this point. Obviously, due to more of the onus being uh placed on the haulers and due to the fact that uh self-hauling uh potentially wouldn't be allowed, so there's less of that um monitoring and reporting of the software and uh kind of guidance and everything um in this, in the self-hauling realm. So um basically, that um FTE here at the county level will be responsible for all of, basically, the teeth of the um of the uh regulation. So all of the um uh monitoring and enforcement, because that is something that we cannot actually have uh the haulers do or have any other uh party do for us. You know, that's one thing that we have to do regardless of whatever model we choose. The state has said that we cannot um outsource that uh portion of the responsibility. So um with that, there's still some uh potential build-out needed. We, to the tune of the same hundred thousand dollar amount, again, one-time cost, and then five thousand dollars for some IT supplies um and uh needed uh equipment for that um new FTE. So uh initial year one cost at two hundred and ten thousand dollars and then decreasing uh year two and ongoing to a hundred and ten thousand. And a- again, the uh smaller price tag here due to um less effort on the county part and the potential to not allow the self-hauling and uh, you know, having more of that taken care of by um the franchise zones and the haulers within those franchise zones. And then now to the generator impacts of that franchise model. So um, exact opposite of the free market, right? They they have no choice of uh what what they choose to do, whether, you know, because obviously, you know, they're uh the the option to self-haul is probably not going to be there. And uh they're going to um be mandated to actually procure service from that specific hauler within their jurisdiction. So no choice, that's that's the big one here. But just a a a quick note, from all of the discussions that we've had with all all of our haulers, depending on, you know, how the county is divided up into all of the various zones and keeping with uh, you know, route efficiencies and economies of scale and things with our current haulers, um the thought is that about eighty-five percent of the generators right now would keep their existing haulers. So uh you you can look at it as to say, you know, eighty-five percent of those will still basically have their free choice because they're procuring those services now without being told to do so. So um it's a it it's a small portion that would basically um, you know, in in theory, a a small portion would basically be uh required to, you know, maybe procure some services from, you know, somebody that they may may not wish to essentially. But um with that, uh we could potentially see controlled rates. Obviously, those are going to be uh controlled at the county level and governed through the franchise agreements for the term of those agreements. So um generators won't have to worry about um sudden spikes in rates, uh uncontrolled rate increases, you know, all of that will be a little better managed through the agreements and uh the terms of those agreements. And obviously, um the longer those agreements are, um the, you know, the the longer period of time in which the haulers can spread out, you know, various investment costs and cost recovery costs. So that way, it's, you know, less of a hit to the generators per year. So um obviously, if those contracts are shorter, they're wanting their money back in a shorter timeframe, and so rates could potentially be higher. So um again, all that to say, um there are, you know, uh controlled rates in this environment, which is different than the free market model. And then, again, as as we're looking to recover costs on both models, there uh and again, this is, you know, in in its infancy infancy stages and uh yet to be finalized, but uh potential cost recovery here um in in the form of a simple, you know, administrative fee that's just tacked on uh to the um existing hauling bills that that they would have. So if we have a year one at two hundred and ten thousand dollars divided by the two thousand five hundred and ninety-four generators that we have, we could see a year one admin fee of about eighty-one dollars per generator, and then that would go down to forty-two dollars per generator every year thereafter. Um and again, that would just be on top of their, you know, um uh existing uh hauler services. So um and they, with that, although that, they're going to be required to procure service in their various uh zones and and haulers, there will be the option to, as I mentioned earlier, to um self-haul excess waste. So as I mentioned earlier, if they, you know, remodel their house or uh re-landscap their yards or something, you know, they they'll have that option to self-haul that to KWRA if they would like. With uh obviously, you know, the similar option to suspend service for vacation uh leaves and things like that. And one important note, that's um, that is a a great um uh addition here, an actual positive impact um on the generators is additional services that they receive, actually procuring services from haulers. So um haulers actually, you know, throughout the year, they have various uh additional programs, whether that's, you know, community cleanup day or hazmat pickup day, illegal trash dump day, stuff like that, where uh things that may have uh potentially been just dumped on, you know, the side of someone's canal or in someone's farm, there actually be potential outlets um that uh the haulers will come by, you know, various times throughout the year, um to kind of clean up some of these uh things that are outside of the scope of uh someone's normal uh normal waste. So that that could potentially um, you know, decrease some of the illegal dumping and uh maybe relieve some of the headache on some of the farmers that see trash and stuff, you know, fill up in their canals and fields and things like that. So so with that, um that's kind of the why we're here, what we have to do and how that impacts us as an agency and how it impacts the generators within our jurisdictions. So lastly, in my slideshow, and I'll I'll leave this up to your discretion if if you want to go through them one by one. But um I just have the county map here um showing your board and uh those in attendance and online what areas we're actually going to be responsible for. And so every area that is colored in is um a jurisdiction that is going to be responsible for everything that I have laid out here today. All of the responsibilities, um those in these colored areas um are going to be responsible to do so. Those areas in white, they have been exempted from everything due to the population density being under seventy-five people uh per square mile in each of the census tracts. So obviously, all the areas in white, we don't have to worry about. They can continue uh continue to do um that that they've continued to do up to this point. So um with that, uh I have every one of your districts outlined here. I have your district map. And just as an example, I'll just pull up District One. I let every district know what their uh, what the generators are that we're responsible for. And then um I will outline what your specific district will look like and what areas we will be responsible for. So I can go through every district if you'd like, or if you would rather not and save time, I I could do that as well. So I'll I'll leave that up to your discretion. If anybody wants to see their particular district or any particular section of their district, yes, sir.
So when you talk about generators, are you talking about, say, uh mobile food trucks as well?
No, generators, this is uh like household generators. There's, yes, there's there's separate requirements for commercial um food generators in regards to separating out their, you know, usable and unusable um, you know, excess food, you know, so.
Would it, would it be um easier if you just went back a slide to the general?
I could definitely. Yes, sir.
And verbally uh verbally announce uh uh communities or the areas that
Yes.
are going to be affected.
Absolutely. So and it's tricky um because these are colored by census tract because that is the uh criteria that CalRecycle laid out. And so it is possible that one census tract has three jurisdictions in there. So whether that is um a city jurisdiction, um us as a county in an unincorporated area, as well as portions of a community services district. So although, for instance, uh, let me get my pointer here. So although here in District Two, we have this light green area and this, you know, dark orangish area, although they're highlighted as areas of responsibility, we may not have any uh generators in our specific jurisdictional area in there because we just simply share a census tract with uh Corcoran. And so we might have uh one generator in there, or five, or zero. And so um in in the grand scheme of things, our general uh jurisdictional areas, with all of the exemptions that we've received in the census tracts, we're going to be responsible for the Grangeville area, um the Armona area that falls outside of the community services district, um a little bit of the fringe area on the outskirts of Lemoore, as well as the uh fringe area on the outskirts of Corcoran there. Everything else is going to be taken care of within either an incorporated city, a community services district. And so those are going to be our general um areas of responsibility.
So then um the community services district, they have to take up the same issue that we are for them to figure out the impacts to the uh residents under that CSD?
Correct, yes.
Got it.
Yeah, and I've I've emailed the, all of the CSDs, um, I can't remember if it was late last year or early this year, whenever we did our census tract exemptions, to let them know of that option as well, to see if any census tracts within their jurisdictions would actually qualify for similar exemptions. And so uh I'm not sure if they've, you know, uh applied for such exemptions or not, but um that option is there for them as well. But yes, they're they're going to be responsible for uh the same thing we're going to be responsible for within their boundaries.
Mr. Hill, you have a question coming?
Yeah, just a couple of points of clarification, uh and I'm not sure if Mr. Boyer covered this and I missed it. But the first point is uh CalRecycle does allow for exemptions for certain areas or waivers. We did ask and got approved for every waiver that met their criteria. They were a little s- more sticky on others, so we were denied some, but we did get waivers everywhere we could or where they would allow. On the budget items, uh you, Mr. Val or Supervisor Valley, you had asked a question about the bill. buildout. Just wanted to point out to your board that this is worst case scenario or best case scenario, depending on who you are, optimist or pessimist. Those prices would vary depending on where the staff member landed in the needs in that respective department for that buildout. It may be less, but we're again going on the other side of that value.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
See who which one takes us up. So going back to that point, Mr. Hill, I mean, even if you're looking at the county impacts, if we went with the franchise model, it still says one full-time position. And then it says the duty is processing violations pursuant to King's County Waste Ordinance. So would you really see the county being that aggressive to where we needed to create a full-time employee versus taking some time and really digging into the weeds and finding the right office department jurisdiction that could possibly add this duty to an existing employee and 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 look at a salary increase to that individual versus having to create another full-time position just for the purpose of going and writing up tickets to these folks?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Supervisor Valley. There's multiple aspects to that. It's not just the inspection and the enforcement. There's also the monitoring, also the education and all of the other items outlined, and I'm not sure what slide that is, Mr. Boyett. But there's multiple factors there. There are, of course, options that we do have at our disposal. As far as it comes to increasing anybody's salary, then that would, of course, require negotiations with the respective bargaining unit. So that is also dependent on where that position lands. But yes, all those options are on the table.
Looking for work?
Well, how about we just add the job duty to the C A O's job duty?
Get me out of the office? Okay. I'm good for that.
Additional questions or comments?
I guess I have one. So they're in in no possible scenario. So like, you have a city jurisdiction that's picking up trash today, they're still going to be picking up that trash, and that line is going to be hard. It's not going to be blurred by census census tract issue. And so if you're getting picked up by city trash today, it's going to be a city trash issue. It's not going to be a county issue.
Correct. Yeah, and that that was what Mr. Hill was alluding to when he mentioned that we had applied for some additional census tracts, you know, based on a little bit of the vagueness of the language and the regulations for those exemptions, where Cal Recycle, you know, treats the census tract as a whole regardless of however many jurisdictions are in there. Yet, when it comes to what you're talking about, the actual implementation and services and everything, then it's every jurisdiction is completely separate. So that was kind of our, you know, point in those additional census tracts. It's like, you know, although, you know, we're sharing a census tract with the city and their, you know, population density numbers are affecting us and our responsibility for a particular, you know, tract and everything. And so so yes, the, you know, census tracts are treated the same regardless of who's inside for purposes of exemption, but for purposes of actual hauling and services and responsibilities, it's every man for themselves.
And I guess and then with respect to the previous discussion about, you know, hiring or not hiring someone, but in our jurisdictional control, we are the we're ultimately responsible for everything that occurs.
Correct.
So if there's a bad actor in that group that doesn't comply and just thumbs their nose at it, we're still on the hook. So, you know, I think at least, you know, in in the initial cost, it looks like it's a little higher and then it drops, that person is designated, but I'm sure we can adjust going forward if the demand is less. But clearly, you know, I mean, we don't want the people that are complying with the system to have to cover the cost of someone that's not. And I think that's why we need that that personnel.
I don't know about our relationship. I know Supervisor Neves and myself went to Mid Valley disposal, their luncheon here about six months ago. They're doing all they can to prepare themselves to be able to handle this. So as long as we have an open line of communication, who is following the rules, who is not, then we can work together with them, correct? Is that how you see it, Joe?
The only thing is, is especially with the organics recycling, there is not enough capacity in the system. Currently, we have Katergan Farms that is doing some organics, and I think they're expanding their contract to be able to handle food waste. We the system just doesn't quite have enough. Mid Valley operates a facility in Kermin that takes care of a large jurisdiction that is at capacity. So when these programs come online, there's going to be product that won't have a home. So that's the other part of the investment. King's Wasting Recycling is kind of looking at a seven, seven and a half million dollar before inflation, construction of a composting facility, much like the Kermin plant. But again, if if Katergans is able to step up to the plate and expand their services and expand their abilities within their own footprint, you know, that that investment may not be needed.
I know that we were in D C at the NACO conference, and and one of the discussions and one of the panels was talking about organic waste and what a problem it was for landfills. And none of this came up. It was all PFAP, which is popcorn bags and coffee cups.
Right.
Which is the biggest problem, but it didn't identify that at all, does it?
No, no. And 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 it doesn't identify a lot of the ag areas, you know, between, you know, poultry and sheep and goats and different kinds of food options. They are optioned out to other disposal, even though it doesn't really meet the definition of recycling.
Yeah, and I just think this is going to be really hard to implement, and we'll have to watch it for a couple of years before we figure out what we're actually supposed to do.
And 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 the and the bad part is, even with the schools, you know, you have a school site, Island, Dick Carson, you know, they're technically within our district. They only operate one hundred and eighty-seven days a year, so you've got to have one hundred and eighty-seven days that they're not anybody on campus. And so it's going to be difficult to to have a rate structure or a service that's only going to operate nine months out of the year, yet you have to support that service twelve months out of the year.
Or get them from goats.
Yeah, exactly. You know, and just go ahead and let recycling, nat- natural recycling, take its place.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion on free market or franchise? Mr. Hill, you have your direction?
Not yet. And and real quick, oh, sorry, go ahead. Oh, just just wanted to let the let your board know that depending on the direction given this morning, you know, staff have kind of, you know, brainstormed a little bit as to, you know, community outreach that that we would do to inform those that were that we are responsible for of S B thirteen eighty-three and what implementation will mean for them and stuff like that. And so these are just the preliminary, you know, areas. Again, this could, you know, all change. But to kind of cover all of our service areas that I had mentioned earlier, we've identified the following locations to kind of cover all of our bases here. So the Pioneer School area, which will kind of cover the Armona and Grangeville services service areas for us. Central Union, which would cover the Lemoore Fringe area, as well as the City of Corcoran, which would cover the outskirts of Corcoran there. So depending on your direction, we'll finalize what what that implementation looks like and then, you know, start to go out to those communities. And again, we haven't reached out to any of those communities yet, but those are just the ones that came to our mind, and we'll work with those and ensure that we get out into the community to do, you know, that that outreach and information, so.
And we're supposed to pick today either free market or franchise, correct?
That.
It's a study session, so.
Study session. You don't pick anything today.
It is a study session, but it's also agenda agendized for the board to direct staff to take action as deemed necessary for implementation of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, which gives your board the ability to direct staff about whether they want you want the free market. Matt, maybe you can let us know whether it's necessary for the board to take that action today or whether there's additional time for them to consider that.
Obviously, you know, if 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 you're, you know, wanting to, you know, have additional time, that is, you know, definitely, you know, your your authority and but with 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 everything, you know, time is of the essence. And, you know, we we did submit our S B six one nine notice of intent to comply and have kind of outlined a certain timeline there. And depending on the the board's direction, we can still meet that timeline. And if, you know, and depending on another direction, it might be a little tight, but we still going to make it work. So again, time is ultimately of the essence. And so, you know, we're we're hoping to to get direction soon and but all all that to say, you know, if you guys, you know, would like any additional information or more time, I mean, that's, you know, we'll definitely do that for you, so.
We'll get to it, free market or franchise. I mean, free market, we'll see where it lands, see how it worked out, and we'll adjust it later on, correct?
Correct. Now, and thirteen eighty-three actually came on board in January of this year, so we're already five months behind. It's been on everybody's radar for.
Well, I got a chicken and a couple of dogs, so I'm good.
Exactly.
Yeah. I burn everything else.
And it's and and being part of the clean your plate generation, there's not a whole lot of stuff left.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, no, and I fully understand that, but.
You can scrape the mold off, it's still good.
Exactly. You know? And then, yeah, backyard composting and all of the other livestock activities, so.
So is it time, are we done with the public hearing? Is it public hearing?
This is not a, yeah, it's just a study session, not a public hearing, but.
Would this try a free market? What happens in that direction? Any other discussion? Second?
Nah, we don't need a second. We just have direction on by consensus.
If there is consensus, then I I think that that's adequate in this is, yes, consensus will be adequate.
So is anyone not in favor of the open market?
I'm getting me a goat.
They have some pretty good pygmy goats. They have personality.
Come back over here.
And you're back home?
Yeah.
Rosemary? Marie? Mary? Mary? Why you mess up your name so bad?
Rosemary.
Rosemary. Any capacity or between you and Troy on environmental health? Do you see any? Because you already have the database of generators you are, no?
No, so we're actually, I don't know if I do want to solve the details.
Okay.
We would have to evaluate it because I don't, right now, we're kind of at capacity with our staff.
Okay.
One staff person down, so.
Okay.
For that.
Yeah. So between you, the Ag Department, or Public Works, or probably, I think, the three, I only throw in the Ag Department because, you know, sometimes animal health issues are a part of the problem. And so I think for backyard poultry operations or even some bovine operations really needs some, a little bit more oversight on some of the.
So I get that's what brought up a good point.
Yeah.
Packing shed.
Correct.
Discarded fruit.
Correct.
Nothing wrong with it, has a blemish.
Correct.
Is that impacted?
Could be, could be livestock food, could be dried, could be.
Sometimes they put it on a driveway, sometimes they take it to a dairy.
Correct.
But it's not marketable.
Correct.
So.
Troy, do we?
Would be causing a problem.
You don't.
Somebody else?
Do you track that? Do you track the?
We don't, we don't track that, but that that, you know, inedible fruit like that from packing house, that could be part of the edible food recovery that could go to food banks and such like that. That could be part of that edible food recovery system that they're trying to implement with this.
So what we actually, we have here has an impact on a lot of day-to-day operations.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But we got to be careful. I think the free market will give people an opportunity to adjust it to what they do, give them time to get it done. I don't know what the restrictions are for the state to enforce it, but, you know, you got taco trucks, food vendors on the side of the road, you got packing sheds, you got people picking fruit, stuff goes on the ground, it's not quite right. Are they going to come out there and inspect that? I worry about doing too much control on something we have no control over. You know, hail damage, you know, hail comes through here, wipes out your apricot crop. I mean, is that your problem at that time? Do you have to get those bruised apricots to a market or are you going to be fine? I don't want to, I don't want to give a grow a ten thousand dollar fine, we just lost this crop because you didn't pick it up in time to give it to a homeless person. I want to be careful here.
Yeah, and the same.
That's why I went against it the first time, because it is not identified enough to understand what we're doing here exactly and how it's going to impact every single person.
Right.
And I don't want to impact people that are making a living by running a processing facility or or packing shed or or food vendors or a household with six foster kids that have leftover food. I mean, we got to be real careful.
Right.
And I think it's a typical unfunded mandate by the state that has no clue how we live in our community. Now, I understand if I live in an apartment complex, you know, you can generate trash, you can put it in a separate receptacle, and you've got five hundred units, that's a different story than a lone person down in the middle of the field. Even though the zones are marketed, we only have two thousand people that we have to watch, I think it should be learn and and watch and see how we can how we can get a handle on it. But I worry about the impacts in the future of doing too much and not knowing what the impact's going to be in the future.
Right.
Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The items that were brought up earlier were a part of the food recovery, which is outside of the scope of the hauling that we're talking about. The food recovery is going to happen anyways. In addition to that, they do have criteria for who fits into what area, and we we missed that in this presentation, and we'll bring that back when we bring back the free market and all of the details on who this applies to, who it doesn't, so that you won't have those questions.
Yeah, I just, you know, we've been caught with our pants down before making a decision on something that effectively we have no clue about.
Yeah.
Unfunded mandates are, I mean, this is typical of our our legislation in the state Capitol, putting restrictions on us to implement something that has, we have no control over, and we paid a price for it in public, so I want to be careful.
I I agree with Sup, being on the comments, quite frankly, I'm more concerned with people setting off illegal fireworks than something like this, you know?
Against fireworks?
I do.
I'll bring it some to the car for this week.
Fire chief already left, but take notes?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The greater the better.
Oh, man.
Yeah, and and there's, a lot of activities are already going on. The Episcopalian Soup Kitchen gets a lot of leftover food that I don't think anybody's tracking. And again, that's going to be a cost to be able to track that. King's Wasting Recycling, we've already upgraded the software system where we do, we will be able to track everything to its best ability, but there are a lot of activities that are going on right now that are just not being tracked. And but the cost ratio benefit of, you know, is it, is it worth investing a hundred grand to chase ten tons is is the discussion.
So you know, the free market is the one that we got to hire two full-time employees for.
Well, I I take I take my food to the soup kitchen once a year, I clean out my freezer, anything that's getting close to being spoiled, I'm not going to eat it in time, I don't eat it in the soup kitchen.
Correct.
So often document that.
At some point, just give it to me on barbecue, you know, some point you're going to want to do that.
Mr. Chair, if I could jump in here a second, I want to clarify, since we're talking about edible food recovery and.
Out of line?
Yeah, a little bit out of line.
So there's there's two types of edible food generators that are going to be required to comply with this. And that's they're they're classified as tier one and tier two commercial food generators that are going to have to, you know, separate their unused food. And so tier one, this is the criteria for tier one commercial food generators. Supermarkets, grocery stores that are greater than ten thousand feet, foods, food service providers, food distributors, and wholesale food vendors. And then commercial, or excuse me, in tier two, commercial food generators are restaurants that have two hundred and fifty seats or more, or are greater than five thousand square feet, hotels with onsite food facilities with two hundred or more rooms, health facilities with onsite food facilities that have a hundred or more beds, large events and vendors, state agencies with cafeterias of greater than two hundred and fifty seats or five thousand square feet, and local education agencies with onsite food facilities. So if you don't fall within any of that criteria, then you're not going to be required. Yes, sir.
And then to, once again, bring this back full circle, the the food recovery portion has already been figured out for our county, so that's why we weren't discussing it today. There's very few, if I'm even going to go out on a limb and say zero tier one and tier two within the county limits, maybe two, but public health is already taking on the food recovery side, so that piece has already been figured out. We're on the waste hauling side.
Okay, I get it. So free market. Very good, that's the direction, Diane.
Yes, I just want to clarify, since it's being done by consensus and we have five members of the board, it's my understanding that all five members of the board are agreeing to. to uh to the option of self hauling for SB thirteen eighty three if any board member um disagrees with with that then um I'll let you voice your opinion now.
I guess the question is um from a franchise you you negotiate a rate we're talking about a number of citizens that uh are not included in this I mean when you look at the white area there's a a big area that's not included in that but um somehow the rate would have to be smoothed and so either way um you know the hauler is going to uh capture the cost and whether we're negotiating on behalf of uh those that are gonna haul and possibly those that aren't gonna need hauling that that rate is gonna have to be smoothed to capture the cost anyway so whether you see it on your bill or not waste rates are gonna go up and whether you're in the system or not is probably gonna have no no uh bearing on what you're gonna pay to have your waste halt so I mean it's a toss up right?
Correct. And the investment and and the investment of infrastructure to make it happen.
I've taken my uh shots and got out in front of stuff too much this year saw that y'all.
What a chicken.
You guys go first.
Man glitter.
So so for clarification do we have a consensus of all but five board members?
Four and a half.
See Peterson's idea I'll second.
If we do not have a consensus then I'll request that we take an actual vote.
Uh triples uh motion second.
On Craig Shelders we're following his lead better work out for you're done.
This uh see uh Peterson's legacy at the board is county board of supervision.
In your plate that and redistrict.
I don't remember you you Diane.
I might be missing something but I'm trying to make sense of what we have going on there is there consensus?
That's all Greg's fault I think you got.
Free market by consensus nobody's.
Fall to hear me.
Well there were a lot of words.
Everybody else say that.
All right so let me clarify again we have a direction by consensus which means all five board members to for free market um self hauling option um or for the free market option and staff will move in that direction and if 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 anybody has a different opinion then um then you can speak now.
You can vote no when it comes up.
Right.
That's right.
Right and then are we in communication with our haulers?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah and then we actually have two haulers online right now we've got Michael Rivera for Waste Management and I see Joe Heisdorf there from Mid Valley uh my we've been in countless meetings with all of our haulers as to.
Can we ask them and how they feel about the free market that that worked for them or they would like to franchise it?
This is this is Joe Kalpka can you hear me?
Yes sir.
Hi this is uh thank you Joe Kalpka owner Mid Valley disposal so I have just a couple comments tonight or this morning excuse me on the on kind of thirteen eighty three and and the direction um from staff today first of all thank you Mr. Boyett for a a great presentation on thirteen eighty three we all know that this is something that was passed out of Sacramento and and it's and us as uh as government as a a private hauler and as citizen have to bear the cost for it um you know the collection of organic waste is is based on uh what the what the generators um create obviously and and I think we've had a good discussion of that today um but the costs are something that I wanted to discuss a little bit the cost of implementing thirteen eighty three and it's gonna require um whether it's a free market or whether it's a franchise model that those generators of twenty I think there was twenty six hundred that are uh not excluded from thirteen eighty three will be required by law to subscribe to uh an organic service a three cart service um we currently in in Kings County I've been around for twenty five years out there and had my hauling company for twenty five years in Kings County and getting a a subscription um for recycling services is is not the easiest thing it's because it's not mandatory however the county is required now to mandate that those three carts are separated and the three items garbage your recycling and your organics go into three carts under the free market system I there are challenges to implementation um you look at the franchise model uh and costs and and you if you're going down a road this is this is probably the simplest way I can say this you're going down a road and it's a free market and and Mid Valley has call it five customers on this road of ten customers right there's ten homes on this road I have five one other company has four another company has one and you're driving down this road you got a hundred percent of cost spread out on five customers right on my uh for my vehicle now if I have ten customers on that road hundred percent of that cost is spread between ten customers um and it it will be most cost effective to give an area of that truck going down one road and picking up all the carts rather than picking up half of them and having another company come another day increase truck truck traffic increase roads and increase uh emissions now what I didn't hear from staff today was you look at the franchise model uh and you look around the state of California you look around the central valley you look at Bakersfield Kern County it's franchised it's been franchised for thirty years you go a little east of you uh to to Larry County and to Larry County has been franchised you go a little to the north and you've got uh Fresno County and Fresno County has the same model we did in two thousand and five with multiple haulers um Madera said the entire state of California is franchised because it it's cost effective that's why that's why it's done with these state managed you can't if you didn't have state mandates you could go back to uh picking up one cart down a road and and it works but when you have three carts out there and you have a handful of haulers going down that road instead of three trucks going down that road you could have fifteen you could have twenty trucks going down that road providing the same service same price probably higher because it because you have to spread your costs out so these are the things that that we look at and 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 we don't it's not the it's not the favorable uh thing to do is tell people they have to subscribe to service but you're not doing it the state did it this is something that 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 was created in Sacramento and passed on to the ratepayers and so I don't know how the open market works with this new with this new program Matt i- is there a county I I know you and I had a conversation a few months back but have you found a a county in California that uh has chosen this open market system with thirteen eighty three is that is that system something that's been approved by Cal Recycle uh and and I don't wanna put more burden on it but by by saying the state's gonna do it but is there a model that even works is the question I have I haven't seen one I've been in this business my whole life I haven't seen one did you find one?
I I haven't been made aware of another jurisdiction the like ours that does uh free market.
So you could have shared that with us when Sue Bourbon was talking about it to help lead us.
I'm gonna change my vote right now I'm gonna go completely crazy I'm a hundred eighty degrees I'm gonna go franchise yeah I'm gonna listen to Joe he's an expert in the field and uh he dominates getting up to correct my.
I would I would just.
Where you been?
Just down the line too of less vehicles less vehicles on the road um that 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 is a good point we got too much going on right now I mean.
My idea of free market was different than what he explained so I fully understand now so I will change my decision to go to franchise.
I'm gonna I'm gonna um follow along with Sue Bourbon as well.
I'm still gonna blame Craig.
If I might uh Dominic Tiberius keep public works department so a couple of things um and I appreciate uh Mr. Kalpka's comments uh we only have three haulers that function here in in Kings County so you wouldn't have necessarily ten trucks one of those haulers only uh hauls in uh the Corcoran area that's American Trash Tulley um per Mid Valley's own records they have roughly seventy five percent of the county so the idea that now you're gonna have you know tens of trucks coming down roads that don't currently exist is not true uh the other thing you know I I would offer that a place where the free market works is right here in Kings County we've been doing it for however long.
Nineteen eighty nine.
There you go and and it works just fine so yes other counties do uh utilize the franchise and it makes sense there uh they have a higher population um they have more generators that they have to accommodate we have roughly twenty six hundred generators um and even in this current market with gas prices out of control I I've spoken with residents here in the county such as yourselves who have not experienced spikes in in their trash collection bills now I understand there there's uh an investment that needs to occur in order to account for the the green waste and I think there's some concern there from the haulers and and I think the uh the franchise agreements give them some uh protection in that regard the one thing we didn't talk about is as part of the licenses that we currently issue for the haulers we will be adding contracts so those protections and those agreements will still be in place uh to allow them you know a number of years to service the county to recoup their costs um there will also be the requirements to implement all of thirteen eighty three uh what it does by keeping it free market is it keeps the county out of the business of setting rates so we would have to go through the proposition two eighteen process where uh in order to set these rates you know the the constituents have an opportunity to vote against that now it requires a majority uh it's not really a vote a majority of the residents would have to oppose it in order to shut it down um but it keeps the county out of the business of setting rates it it allows freedom of the market and I think there's a way that we can do that while still uh protecting the haulers investments through through the agreements that that we will be developing. So could you define the conundrum that you've just outlined with uh two eighteen process uh being voted down but yet a state mandate requiring how do you vote something down that's mandated? So they can't vote down the requirements what they can do is if a majority of them oppose the rates that the county is proposing we have to go back to the drawing board until we can reach uh consensus now I don't anticipate that happening uh because you would have to have a a large number of folks you know uh oppose it I've personally been in situations where uh in smaller jurisdictions they can effectively kick the can down the road utilizing the proposition two eighteen process I don't see that being a problem here but what it does is creates a a number of additional steps that the county has to engage in uh it extends the timeline and at the end of the day the county's in the business of setting rates which is something we've tried to avoid for a number of years uh part of this process which wasn't mentioned we have a legal opinion from county council and from an outside party that measure G was preempted by prior state law meaning it it never was uh lawful so we've been operating under this idea that we cannot mandate service which is in direct conflict with proposition I'm sorry with uh SB thirteen eighty three so crossing that hurdle allows us to implement this law uh but at the same time we can keep some of those elements of measure G that the community supported.
And we work for the community if we go against them we'll get trash thrown at us like last time I I I rescind my statement the second time but I stick with the first one we'll stay with free market sorry Joe uh that's where we live we live in an area where people would fight for the trash and I remember our trash our choice and people were completely mad at that time so I I don't wanna relive that. Thank you Dominic thanks for thinking about it timely.
If I I have one more comment Joe Kalpka really quick um so thirteen eighty three is gonna require the county at some level to implement three carts to every house in the twenty six hundred people that are not exempt and if there's one cart there now I just wanna let you and I I this is this is a fact if there's one cart now and there's three haulers going down that road and you give them three carts you are you're asking you're you're creating additional truck traffic down that road and those costs will be spread out amongst the the five or six that you have on the out of that ten and and not all the ten I don't know how you mandate and and this is my other thing in a free market if I have a customer now this is a county requirement it's not a hauler requirement if I have a if you have a customer that says he's not he refuses they refuse to do it and that and the states requires it and we can't enforce it I don't I don't see how thirteen eighty three and the compliance with the state's gonna happen and and I I I've implemented a thirteen eighty three in 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 twenty jurisdictions throughout the valley um I I re- I completely respect the county's decision uh that that they want it to be open market they want it to be a free market it's just it I I don't I I I looked at it I can't comprehend how it works with with thirteen eighty three and and the hundred and eighty two pages of state regulations to make it work I I I I wanna do it I'll I'm here to help you know that um it's what we do um the second thing is with thirteen eighty three you're you're asking about capacity you're asking about investment there's already investment made and through through a franchise agreement you can you can mandate that those organics collected go to your facility um and so you wouldn't have the option or or the need to to do any more investment if you did that if that makes sense they're already there it's already available you mandated it through a franchise agreement that that the the organic waste collected must go to a processing facility.
Even Mr. Chairman even three ex three trucks going down the road to me um that's that possibility is concerning we I mean we we have.
You already have three trucks now.
Yeah but he's saying.
You're gonna have nine.
And and different yeah the the multiplier I get I get what he's saying so the the increase isn't as big as he said the first time and dominate no they down but uh but that uh to me to me that to me that is a concern and we 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 have enough going on around right now we're just even that element right there um is a positive to me on the franchise model to to keep to keep to keep that the possibility of that number being lower than what we have right now.
If I might make a couple of comments so um just to clarify three cart system is not a requirement of the law uh there are other options if you have a high diversion facility um it does impact cost the the other thing I wanna point out is as we pointed out eighty five percent of existing generators would not be required to switch service if we went to the franchise which means under the free market you're gonna have very few additional uh trucks in in those areas so um whether you go franchise or free market if we go with the three cart system you're still gonna have that additional generation um limiting it to the franchise versus the free market is not gonna further reduce those number of trucks. I I don't know if I my point was much clearer in my mind before I said it so I don't know if it came across the the way.
I don't know.
So when I'm.
Question so uh is Corcoran contracted or does the city do it?
Contracted.
It's contracted.
Okay. They're not.
City Lemoore does their own.
Correct city Hanford does their own and the city Hanford does the unincorporated areas around it and prior to annexations Corcoran uh the contract operated both city and county.
Thanks for calling in Joe.
You got it guys thank you.
Appreciate it.
Do you wanna take the time to bring this back or? Well I have Mid Valley they missed my trust three times this year already so it don't matter they gotta come back and get it so.
Yeah and then uh Michael Michael from Waste Management anything any comments?
He's taking out the trash.
I think we're gonna revisit this in a year I mean.
Oh no exactly it'll be a work in progress.
Um you know maybe this will free franchise uh free it won't work it will give it a try see what happens we'll come back and look at it again.
Okay.
And and Mr. Chairman I do wanna note that um as it's still complex to the board we've been talking about for an hour staff did a good uh job of um briefing us we've had one on ones uh and uh so no fault to the staff on you know as we're as we're going back and forth on this issue and looking at it all sides they they did a good job of giving us a heads up and making sure this isn't something that just landed on top of us here today so thank you thank you sir for that.
Can I just confirm um the final do we still have a consensus um for the free market system?
I'm undecided just for the record. I'm undecided, just for the record.
Yeah. Is this something that needs to come back in one week? Matt, do we have time to bring it back in one week?
I, I think that would be fine if the board wants to, you know, have it brought back before.
Say that again.
Deadline for board next week was last Tuesday.
Yeah. So you, it'll be at least two weeks and then plus with Memorial Day. So it's either going to be three weeks or five.
Is that going to be a little too far out, Matt?
Where we at? I know you're undecided. I'm decided. You'd be excited. You want to pick your neck out there, Shorty?
Go ahead.
Three to two.
You know what? If we, let's do a motion and a vote. And if, if there's a majority, then we can carry.
Second. Second.
The motion is, just for clarification, to do the free market system? Okay?
I'm not having my, my house, people drive by yelling at me, telling me my trash, my choice.
You do have a comment? Okay. Is he gonna, did you tell him to call in? Oh, okay. Oh, you, oh, can you want to read that into the record?
We have a couple messages from Michael Rivera. Audio issues here, but my comments echo those of Mr. Kalpikoff. The infrastructure of the Kings does not support anything less than three-cart collection. High diversion processing facilities are not available in the area such they are elsewhere. Do you have anything else, Mr. Rivera?
Nothing. Very good. All right. That's, that's part of the record.
No further comments from him. Thank you.
All right. Good. Thank you. Additional questions or comments? The item has been moved by Verboon, seconded by Fagundes for the free market option. And if there is no other discussion, will a clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
I guess the best vote that represents me being undecided is the yellow button abstain.
Abstain. Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Abstain.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. The item stands in favor three, in favor two abstentions will move forward with the free market. And just because there, there is some hesitance, maybe we should just continue to, to look at the franchise part of it as well. Just don't invest a lot of time in it. But certainly be able to answer any questions should they come up during the discussion.
Sure. Thank you.
Excellent.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, you can. Anywhere you want. Outside? Trash bin.
Couch meeting at eleven. We're running late. Catherine, is it hard to move over? Or do, would you rather finish up this one? Or Diane? And, and, and board member announcements. Would it be easier just to finish up? Okay. Well, we'll just continue on then. All right. With that, that will come back at a later date. That was a study session with Direction, and we'll move that forward. We'll move on to board member announcements or reports on their own initiative. Supervisor Fagundes.
Well, I want to thank all the people that helped us to our employee recognition. Well, I can't say it was barbecue anymore. But, but anyway, everybody worked hard, participated, and I am really impressed with the participation that we had. And I think it was done very professionally. And I want to thank everybody, everybody that was participated in that. Thank you.
Good. And thank you for all your efforts. I know you had a sleepless night going through, making sure that half of that meat was, was done correctly and timely, and everything worked out very well. Fay did an outstanding job from over in the culinary division. I think everything worked out well. The, you know, the weather was nice, everybody worked well together.
Our staff did a wonderful job, and they did most of the work. All I did was light the, put the oven.
Yeah. Well, that's the important part, though. Without the fire, you know, and I'm not, just got raw meat.
No, just, there's enough propane in the tank for everything.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Yeah. And I still got all my fingers and toes, and I don't have quite as much hair on my hands, but let that hang. Supervisor Valley?
I also want to say thank you to everyone who worked the grill to doing the service. And I know that grilling is, it looks fun, but it's a lot of work involved in it, the, the prep time that nobody sees and, and the sweat over the heat. So also whoever made those beans, thank you. The beans were very, they were good. They were good. So with them, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's all I have for today.
Good. Thank you.
I do want to say, sorry, I do want to say I apologize for being late. Had a traffic incident on the way up. That cost me about twenty minutes of my time. So apologize.
Good. Thank you.
No, I had to say the same thought. Barbecue was great. I think the staff really appreciated it. A lot of hard work. I think the prisoners made the beans.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
Culinary staff.
Culinary staff, yeah.
All right, we're good.
I think somebody, Peterson, talked about the water event he was attending on Friday. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Good. Supervisor Peterson.
Yep. So the aforementioned Sabre Community's effort took place on Friday, an effort to bring some attention to the Central Valley. I think I was hopeful that it was going to be a little more broad. I know we also had some staff there as well. I think it needs to be a broader collaboration than what they were proposing, but certainly are there to support it in any way we can to get more understanding of what's happening in the Central Valley. I think, as I talked a little bit about, you know, not only happening now in the Central Valley, you look at what, you know, the California Water Commission's decision, and, you know, when we took part in the Temperance Flat, Temperance Flat effort and got a zero on public benefit. And then you look at a community like Huntington Beach proposing a multimillion dollar, fifty million gallon a day desal plant, and the Coastal Commission denies it, at least staff did. I think the full board will have an opportunity to possibly change that decision. But when you look at new water supplies in California, there, we're just so far behind that it's, it's un, uncomprehensible. And, and, you know, here we are. So.
The best speaker wasn't elected. She was from Lemoore. Her name is Mrs. Roish, lives on Twenty-first and Geneva. And she let everybody have it.
Good.
Yeah, very good. Quick and to the point. Wasn't afraid to point fingers.
Good. Good. For me, the last two weeks, Kings Waste Recycling Meeting, we received updates on operations. Community cleanups are a little bit different now. People are self-hauling and they have vouchers, and it seems to be working out very well. Tires have become a bigger issue. One of the tire groups that has handled it, a lot of the tires have had some operational difficulties. They're back online now. So, but we did have about forty-five days of excess tires that were coming through. And we continue to work on next year's budget, the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Housing Authority had a meeting. We increased the assistant payment standards in order, order to try to make up for some of the lack of inventory. So some of that increases go to help some of the landlords. But there is still a real shortage of inventory in the market for a lot of, a lot of folks looking for permanent housing, or even temporary housing, to be honest with you. And the public housing, the annual plan was approved. LAFCO, we had a little bit of hiccup again with the Annex Number Seven, when the city of, of Hanford trying to get some of those annexations into the respective jurisdictions. The roadway was still up for question. So we're trying to resolve some of those issues, and it'll come back at a later date. We still have one other annexation of the eight that were in the city of Hanford. And the one around the airport's a little more difficult, so it'll come back a little bit later. And that budget was released to the public as well. So the LAFCO budget is on the street, and if anybody wants to look at that and make comments. At the cart meeting, we had a public meeting on service changes and route modifications. We are continuing to try to adjust to a post-COVID era. And we're trying to get ridership back up. So we are trying to seek additional funding for buses and transits and, and everything that we need to do to get back on track. The water kiosk, we had a report opened up in January of two thousand twenty for a comment period existing to December twenty-one, which again was most of the COVID era. But there were over forty-six thousand gallons of potable water delivered through that system, monthly average of about two thousand gallons, with a peak of about three thousand gallons during the summer, summer months. And that's self-hauled water to, to patrons and anybody that comes up there and needs good drinking water. The Association of Governments meeting, we approved all the transit claims, approved the overall work plans and amendments, and adopted a list of projects for twenty-two, twenty-three. The victims quilt, quilt display was unveiled, unveiled on April twenty-eighth at First Baptist Church. That's been a long time, twenty-year tradition of those victim quilts. The South Fork Kings GSA Finance Committee had a meeting, and we discussed the upcoming budget. And we too will have a two eighteen election based on some of the budget issues. And so we're looking at all of those things very, very carefully. Attended the Old Timers Day Dinner in Avonale on Friday. They had a great taco bar out there. Thank everyone again for the staff appreciation. I think everybody worked out extremely well. And want to thank everybody. West Hills College Administration of Justice Career Expo was held on May fifth. A lot of participation from a lot of different agencies. And certainly want to thank West Hills College for doing that, giving the students an opportunity to look at administrative justice careers, whether that's in a state organization like Corrections, or CHP, or a local jurisdiction like a, a city police department, or probation. So continue to announce softball at Wes, at Lemoore High. We had the Think Pink game, which is always nice. Continue and announce at Lemoore Raceway. West Hills College Paramedic Advisory Committee meeting yesterday, and want to thank Mr. Hill for chairing that. That program continues to, to deliver paramedics to, into the industry. They're, like many other community college programs, you have twenty-six students that are active wanting to join the class, and you have thirteen that graduate, you know, and, and some of them. This class was kind of difficult in that it was in that COVID era. So it was hard to get their clinical time. It was hard to get their hospital time. But the program continues to have a lot of interest, a lot of students. We just need to continue to try to make that system work a little bit better. And I think one of the perspectives is, is that it is a vocational ed training program. It's not really an academic program. And so you have to adjust your curriculum to base on students that are more bulk ed type learners and not academic learners. By shortening it down, it was an eighteen-month program. It's now down to twelve. And it's a lot more condensed, a lot easier, I think, for students to be able to participate. Hospitals and clinics are opening up, and they're having more opportunities. And they're adjusting a lot of their clinical times and contacts. So continues to work well. And then continue to work with Adventist Health on their community needs assessment. This is a four- or five-year process that happens every once in a while, it happens every four or five years. And we continue to look at some of that health information. For the first time, or I think this is second or third time, but for the first time, health really wasn't one of the first or second issues. It's more around housing and fiscal, and financial security. And so those are two of the things that kind of moved up as compared to access to care or access to specialty medical procedures. So it'll be interesting to see how that community needs assessment moves forward, because you do want to be in a whole person care environment. But housing and financial literacy might be a little bit of our, out of our wheelhouse as far as trying to get people to understand those two issues. With that, Mr. Hill, do you have any board correspondence, upcoming events, or information on future agenda items?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your board received a letter from Mid-Kings River GSA regarding notice of proposed amendment to their GSP. The amended GSP will be presented to their Board of Directors during the period beginning May thirtieth, ending in July twenty-seventh. You also received a letter from multiple Assembly and State members requesting thirty-five percent of the Clean Cars for All funding for San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District to continue to support for this venture in the valley. Your board was copied on a letter from MBK Engineers to the Division of Water Rights regarding Tudor Mutual Water Company petition to change involving water transfer under License six one eight four. Your board received, save the date, regarding the city-county coordination meeting, which will take place on Wednesday, June first, two thousand twenty-two, at six P M. The event will be hosted by the city of Corcoran. And attendees should RSVP by Friday, May twentieth by emailing Marlene Spain at, and then we have the email address and for agenda items.
Pick a restaurant?
I don't have that information in front of me. I can get back to you.
Wednesday, June first, six P M. in Corcoran.
Correct. For upcoming events, there will be a job fair on Wednesday, May eleventh, from nine A M. to one P M. at the Coyote Entertainment Center of the Tatchie Palace, located at one seven two two five B Jersey Avenue in Lemoore. Organizers have said, come dressed for success with a resume in hand and two forms of identification. Attendees should be prepared for on-the-spot interviews and hiring. The Santa Rosa Ranch Rehearsal will be hiring, and full-time positions will enjoy medical benefits, dental vision plans with matching 401Ks, vacation and paid time off. Hanford's Thursday Night Marketplace in downtown Hanford Civic Park is back every Thursday from five thirty P M. to nine P M. The event will start taking place on May twelfth through October sixth. The Kings County Peace Officers Memorial will take place on Wednesday, May eighteenth at ten A M. in the Kings County Government Center Courtyard. This will be a celebration and memorial service hosted by the Lemoore Police Department. The Hanford Chamber of Commerce is hosting the Ambassador Leadership Luncheon, which will take place on Wednesday, May eighteenth, from noon to one. Todd Barlow, Superintendent of Schools for Kings County, will be presenting the role of the County Office of Education, Legislative Advocacy, Trends in Education, and what it means to be a successful leader. The cost is ten dollars for non-members, and the lunch will be catered by Hobo Connection. The Professional Latin American Association will be having its seventh annual Taco Truck Throwdown Scholarship Fundraiser on May twenty-first from five P M. to ten P M., Seventh Street in downtown Hanford. Music will be provided by Mezcal. The California, or excuse me, the Central California Blood Center will be holding its Kings County Employee Blood Drive Monday, May twenty-third, from nine A M. to one P M., located at the Old Jury Parking Lot at fourteen hundred Lacey Boulevard. And the Kings County Library will be hosting a free introduction to acting classes taught by Lauren Roshi on Saturday, May twenty-eighth, one P M. at the library located at four one North Doughty Street in Hanford. For upcoming media agenda items, administration has consideration for the appointment of Behavioral Health Advisory Committee position. Community Development Agency will provide a monthly report on planning commission actions. H R has consideration for the job classification revision and Clinical Program Manager in Behavioral Health Department, and consideration for the, the total compensation and classification study. Public Works has six items. Consideration to approve the Deferred Improvement Agreement for Site Plan Review twenty-one dash zero five. Consideration for a grant purchase of new alternative fuel vehicles. Consideration to accept the dedication in lieu of Parcel Map twenty-one dash oh two into the county maintained mileage. Consideration to accept the final map for Track seven five six, Phase four dash three. Consideration to hold a public hearing, Zone of Benefit Formation for Parcel Tax for Road Improvement and Maintenance within Zone of Benefit six dash seven. And consideration to adopt a resolution certifying Kings County Maintain Rose Mileage for two thousand twenty-one. Sheriff has two items. Consideration to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance to add the military equipment use policy pursuant to A B four eight one. And consideration to adopt a resolution designated May eighteenth as Kings County Peace Officer Memorial Day. That concludes our report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The, the May eighteenth, is that the date that you said for the memorial here at our flagpost?
Correct.
Ten A M.?
Twelve to, I'm sorry. Let me get to that item.
Eighteenth on the, ten o'clock on the eighteenth.
Ten A M.
Yes.
Got it. Thanks, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Clarifications? Any other questions or clarifications? With that, that concludes all of the business today. We do have two closed session items. First item, conference with labor negotiator meet and confer regarding the nine units associated with Kings County and a significant exposure to litigation, one case, and we'll have a reporting out next week.
Yes, we can have a reporting out next week.
Yeah, on those two items. With that, we, the board will move into closed session to take up those two items and then adjourn out of closed session to our next regular scheduled meeting on Tuesday, May 17 at 9:00 AM. And we do have a California Community Housing Agency regular meeting at the close of this one right now. So with that, thank you very much, everyone, and this meeting will be moving into closed session.